The first item on the agenda is the roll call.
Thank you. Dr. Brett Echols.
Here.
Dr. Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Mike Schaefer.
Here.
President Robert Uten.
Here.
Thank you.
Um, are there any public comments? I don't have any. You see any hand raised?
I do not, Mr. President.
Okay, then we'll go on to items of study. The first is to receive and file the certified election results. Is that you, Nalani?
Uh, yes, Ms. President, thank you. The recent election resulted in the successful reelection of Directors Arlene Mike Schaefer and Robert Uten. So before you are the election results from the Register of Voters Office, and we're happy to answer any questions.
See, let's go on to item number two on the administration of the oath of office of Director Schaefer, Uten, and Schaefer.
Yes, it is my pleasure to be able to administer that oath to the three reelected Board of Directors. So if you would, before you are the two oath of office forms that I will need you to sign once the oath has been administered. So if I could please ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me.
One at a time or all of us?
One or all together is fine.
Could they stand up? Could stand up at least?
Yes, please. Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Mike Schaefer.
Bob Uten.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Nalani. Okay, we'll go on and David, to receive and file the 2022 Code Enforcement Officer.
President Uten, members of the board. Uh, this is my report for the month of November. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of November, the CMSD interim code enforcement officer focused his efforts in patrols in various parts of the community. The goal to identify and deter instances of scavenging and residential trash carts left within public view. In the month of November, the district saw a number of complaints filed with the CMSD interim code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in the early morning hours. In order to address this resident concerns, the interim code enforcement officer is patrolling the streets by 6:30 a.m. Included below are instances of scavenging that were detected while the officer was investigating specific complaints. Uh, this month, I just caught one active scavenger. Uh, she was on Wilson, uh, was my first contact with her. Uh, I did give her some information. And basically let her know that she can't scavenge here in the city, so. Trash container enforcement for the month of November. Uh, customer complaints reported to the district headquarters regarding trash carts within public view. The following a list of locations where trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. Uh, total cases this month, sixty, uh, very much, uh, fewer than than previous months, uh, was doing another project this month, some manhole recording. So that took some time. Any questions, uh, with trash container enforcement or scavenging today?
Any of the directors have questions? Uh, just an observation, um, are many of these, um, uh, trash container in view repeat offenders?
Uh, a few have.
And 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 when you when when you notify them, are are these noticed to the, uh, do you do you do you leave something that?
I do. The the courtesy violation notice.
Yeah.
Um, if it's if it's a reoccurring problem within thirty days, it would go from a yellow tag to a red tag.
Okay, and so you so you get compliance, that I guess that's my question.
Yeah, I think it was some of the rain issues, uh, you know, people didn't want to go out there in the rain, which is understandable.
Okay, any other questions from the directors? David, thank you for the report.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Uh, reception, composition studies four, number four from Mike.
Vice President, Nabil Guzman would do the introduction.
Good morning, President Uten, members of the board. Mike Vallier, uh, completed with study number four, but it was broken up into two parts because the loads were not ready, so you will see two attachments on the staff report, and Mike is here to present.
Morning, everybody. Uh, the two sorts we did, uh, were basically east side and west side. So, um, we did the, uh, area bounded by East Nineteenth, East Fifteenth, uh, to the north and south and Orange Avenue and Irvine Avenue to the west and east. Um, this one, uh, these residents are doing a great job. There's ten percent overall contamination. What we would consider contamination as any green waste or food waste that was in the container. Basically, food waste at five point nine seven percent was the lowest we've encountered in our four sorts. So kudos, um, and green waste was only four point two one percent. Um, this was the first audit where we broke out wet and coated paper products and cardboard to kind of give you an idea of what might be improved if you were to go to a three container system. Uh, so that was, uh, four point six three percent of the load. Paper and cardboard that were easily recyclable is about seventeen to eighteen percent of the load. Also, what we do is we take out the easily recyclable materials, uh, be all your number one and number two plastic uh, containers, uh, any aluminum, any bi-metal cans and any tin foil. Now, that's not to say there's not other recyclables in there that might be sorted out at the facility, but we're just kind of giving you an idea of what the blue container material would be, uh, so you can see the volume and the weight of that. So again, uh, the first sort was, uh, on the east side, and the folks there are doing a good job, ten percent contamination level. Uh, the other area that we audited later in the day was West Fifteenth Street to West Nineteenth Street and bounded by Whittier and Tustin Avenues. Um, this area is also doing a good job. I mean, traditionally, a twenty percent contamination rate uh, in a program is about average, not ideal, but about average. Um, so again, here, the contamination rate was slightly higher, fourteen point four one percent. Uh, we did have a lot more food waste, and this was typically found in bags. It's like the kitchen trash area, the food is going in there. There was, uh, basically thirteen point one seven percent of the fourteen percent was was food. Twenty eight point six pounds in our sample to only two point seven pounds of green waste. So theoretically, it seems like they're doing a good job keeping the green waste out of the trash, but the food waste additional messaging is needed. So again, that is kind of top level report on that. I'd be happy to answer.
Mike, food in the bags, are they traditionally just Ziploc bags?
No, this is actually the like the white, uh, ten gallon kitchen.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
And with everything from the kitchen area.
Yeah, the reason the reason I ask is my wife's pretty good about until I put, she won't put food waste in the organics cart until I do yard work. It gets, you know what I mean?
I hear you.
So so she puts them in that in the re, uh, what are those bags called, Nabil, help me? The greenish colored bags? A postable, thank you. I knew the president would know that. So those, those would be inside the, what am I trying to say? When you talk about the bags, these are the bags they just take out of their.
Yeah, and actually, what what we're doing is we're sorting the mixed waste containers. So we're not sorting the green waste container.
That's right.
May have.
Okay.
Some.
So there, I mean, people are just putting their trash in their kitchen trash and then throwing it in the mixed waste.
Yeah.
Shaking your head, Julie, so, okay, that's part of that education component to get people to put their food in the organics.
And what's really difficult to know is that thirteen percent of the overall trash, to me, that that seems pretty high on the food side because I think the garbage disposal is used quite a bit by folks. So again, we have no way of knowing how much of the food is going in the garbage disposal versus the trash. So I think if we're, you know, over ten percent on the food side, to me, that's called a.
Yeah, I think even ten percent is high. If if they've got an organic skirt, a hundred percent should be going in that. I mean, that's too idealistic to think people would do that.
It is, and and it's such a habit over a lifetime. Hey, you just throw the food in the trash. It's hard to change it. So consistent messaging, it's about all you can do.
Arlene?
Oh, okay.
Are you, Arlene?
Yes, uh, I have a suggestion that maybe in our next newsletter, we can put something in that indicates where you could get these bags. In other words, you know, that, and and can I highlight about the bags to help? Because it's it's for us and it's for CRNR, too, okay?
Mike, um, you 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 made an estimate of, uh, paper and cardboard and recyclable containers. Are those the things that would go in the blue cart?
Yeah, that would be primarily what would go there depending upon what CRNR accepts. They might accept other plastics, they might accept more materials, but these are kind of universally materials that have recycling markets. These would for certain be blue container items.
Is that in the plastics, is that one through six or?
One and two is is typically PET and HDPE, so like.
The most recycled.
And milk jugs or HDPE, those are pretty valuable, highly recyclable plastics. When you get into the others, the mixed recycling market was really hit by China's various green sword, green fence policies. So those markets aren't as readily available as they were.
Um, but that's a behavior that once we, once we ask people to to recycle, I expect they're they're going to look at the bottom of to six, even if it's styrofoam, they're going to throw that in that, hopefully.
We're seeing about close to a third of what is in the mixed waste container are these easily recyclable items. So again, that might help residents after we've done several sorts to say, you know, if you have a ninety gallon trash container, five gallon would probably work because a third of what you're putting in there could go in the blue recycling container.
Good point.
Have you, what what, um, maybe staff are you, what has been the the most important, um, education part of the program, you know, we we are apparently seeing behavior changes. I guess I'd like a a guesstimate on the list of the kinds of education that we're doing. Is it mainly the newsletter, um, or the website or? Uh, have have we have we gone around and put door hangers on, um?
I think all of the above. I think staff would know know better than I.
Yes. We are doing all of the above, um, and also advertising on social media, which is where we tend to get the most bang for our buck.
Okay.
You know, another point is the gardeners. Now, the gardeners should be putting it in the organic stuff. But maybe in the newsletter, when we're saying something on everything about, uh, where do you can purchase these bags, maybe you should, we should say something about, you know, the garden, please tell your garden to be putting everything in there, too. Because sometimes the gardeners get confused and just dump it, you know, and.
Yeah, now, that message, green waste can no longer go to the landfill is 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 part of the messaging.
You might have a question. Did you do this type of survey for Newport Beach? I'd like a before and after.
No, I I only financially audit the haulers in Newport Beach. I don't do consulting on their.
I was just curious if they had a change to the positive, you know, positive behavior, or if they switched, but you haven't done that.
My guess is you're better than they are, um, simply because you've had the program in place longer than most. So it's it's more mature, um, but that's just a guess. I haven't audited their their containers.
Any other questions from the directors? Thank you, Mike.
I do have, this is kind of off the subject a bit, but it may be you and Julie can. When we used to get shipments or boxes or whatever, they used to dump the peanuts in there. Remember the Styrofoam peanuts? Now I'm finding the stuff I get doesn't have the peanuts. They've got these little blow up bags. Is that? Is that a trend? Is that what these packing companies are doing? Are they going away from the Styrofoam and putting the little bags? And are those little bags? They're not recyclable at all, are they?
They're theoretically more recyclable than Styrofoam. Apologies to National Polystyrene Recycling.
I like the way you qualified that with theoretically, though, that was that was.
Everything's theoretically recyclable, but that film plastic would have a a greater likelihood. And and again, they typically fill it up with air, so.
Yeah.
Volume of material is pretty small.
I think they do that just to entertain little kids.
Yeah.
Because mom and dad and grandma and grandpa give them the bags to, right? Had to ruin my image of little kids popping those bags, didn't you? Oh, the Styrofoam thing. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Progress, not perfection.
There you go. Thanks. Thanks for your indulgence, son.
Thank you, Mike. Um, next item is, uh, to review the third draft agreement amendment with CRNR Incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. President, Nabil Guzman.
Good morning, President Uten, members of the board. Attached is the third draft of the first amendment to our agreement with CRNR. The changes are tracked and read, and the only changes are, um, listed in the staff report. We did reach out to the district treasurer. Um, he had new language regarding the CPI request and his and CMSD's right to audit, uh, CRNR's books because the district's treasurer is who audits on behalf of the district. Um, another change was. The added exhibits A and B, they are, they only had one item each, but we are waiting for CRNR to complete the exhibits, of course. Uh, I am available to answer any questions, and Julie is here as well to answer any questions.
Um, do any of the board members have, Dr. Echols?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so on the exhibit A, I see it was clarified twenty-three homes in one month missed and LDs kick in. That's a significant decrease from ninety, whatever it was, ninety-two. Am I reading this correctly?
I I think before it was.
It was like ninety-two a month or something like that.
Well, yeah, there was, there was, uh, a question, is it weekly or monthly?
Right.
And so that's when we went back and confirmed it with with CRNR. It's we changed it to monthly instead of weekly.
Okay, just confirm it says twenty-three homes in one month missed and then LDs kick in? Okay. Um, and then, uh, on this, so the CPI increases, did I miss? But wasn't it capped at five percent? Is it still capped at five? Okay, so that language didn't change.
Correct, it's still kept at five percent. It was just, I believe the edits we have was what was needed from CRNR and explaining that process a little bit better. So the language before was CR, um, CRNR will submit a request. And the district treasurer just added a request that includes the calculations, and it was just a little more information of what we needed.
Okay, and then on the, uh, I don't know, profitability, is that, uh, based on CRNR's profitability as a company as a whole or just, uh, the Costa Mesa Sanitary District?
It is, they just review books for CMSD. We do not look at them completely as a whole.
Gotcha, and then, um, you know, we hope everybody's profitable, but what are we benchmarking on? Like, okay, they say, just throwing out a number, twenty percent overhead and profit or twenty percent net profit, whatever you want to look at. Well, how does that compare to years past?
Well, that that will be up to the district treasurer to provide that information to you in a closed session, and he'll give you his opinion if it's if the profits enough or not, and you'll make your decision based on the information he gives you.
But I, as I'm reading it, it doesn't say that in here. It just says they'll share their profit with us, but if I've got nothing to base it on, that's what I worry about.
Yeah, again, we we didn't want to put that into the, um, the contract. We want to have the the district, district treasurer have some discretion and and, you know, he's the expert in this field, and so we want him to give you his honest opinion, what he thinks is the the company's making enough money.
This is done in a closed session, and it's not written in the staff report because and he he goes to CRNR headquarters to do the audit, and we can't share it publicly publicly because that becomes public records. So it does have to kind of be in that closed session. You can ask the, um, district treasurer any questions. He does perform these audits every year. He would have the historical information to answer your questions.
So he does have the historical profitability? Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Completed, I believe, three so far, and he's done them every time CRNR, um, requests a CPI increase.
Okay, and then, uh, so, okay, so that, but that alone doesn't trigger our review and discussion of a CPI request. It's just using, uh, additional information we could either approve or deny based on whether profitability is up, down, or the same, right? That's not the trigger.
No, it's not the trigger.
It's just one more piece to review.
Right, as as the, um, the language in the in the in the contract states that we have to have good justification.
Right.
For that, so.
Okay.
The findings were meant to just assist the board in making a decision, whether they deserve the CPI, whether the board wanted to grant it or not.
Okay, gotcha, um. Okay, that's all I have right now. I've got more, but I'll come back to it. Thanks.
And Mr. President, Alan Burns here, I sent you a communication about, um, we might want to give the hauler a little more guidance as to what you want to see for the, um, increase. Maybe you just want to make it wide open and then you apply the criteria, but you might want to, we might want to tighten up the wording on what exactly we want to see from them, namely that their profit margin went down from their operation or whatever the showing is you want to have them make. We we might want to give them a little more guidance on that.
Yeah, I I would agree with that, Alan. I mean, like I said, I hope their profits are through the roof. That's great, but I I and quite frankly, I'm not even sure I care what their actual profit is, but if it's going down or up, then I could use that as CPI. So that, to me, is more important than what their actual percentage is.
I guess we have one.
And we won't be, Mr. President, we won't be sharing the, uh, information on profitability in closed session, but we'll find a way to confidentially communicate that with you. That's not a close.
And, uh, I'm glad to get the numbers on the, um, potential recyclables, um, because I had no way to figure out what, um, the proposed rates would total up to be. Julie, in in your opinion, basically with the proposed rates, our present costs aren't going to go too much different, either up or down.
No, they should be, there might be a little fluctuation. I'm being, by the time the rates go into effect, we'll have two landfill increases. Those are automatic pass-throughs that we get sent from the county of Orange. So, um, and at this point, commodity values are down again. Uh, as Mike stated, it's a roller coaster, uh, depending on the value of commodities, but I don't see a huge fluctuation. The most part's probably going to be in the landfill disposal area, which is, uh, very transparent and easy to see the increase in disposal at the landfill.
And and where do you see that in in your, in, uh, in the rates?
I think, is it the first column? I'm just trying to remember the spreadsheet we put together, the landfill component. The tonnage probably isn't going to change that much. It's going to be based on the benchmark. It's just the cost per ton that will adjust based on county landfill increases.
Um, I'm I'm looking at exhibit A, and, um, there's about a fifty percent increase in the occupancy fee. Is that? What, it it used to be, is that based on the the, because we have a three cart system? It went from ten dollars and something.
Will be once the three, the third cart is rolled out, and there was an increase for occupancy because we will need more trucks. We will need recycling carts, so that is the reason for the increase in occupancy.
My apologies, that's what we refer to in our language as the service component of the rate.
Okay. Well, no, I think it looks good. Um, you know, now I can calculate or make a wild ass, I can guesstimate what the real cost will be based on what Mike said this morning.
And I think I'll just add, President Uten, like Mike stated, recently, this has been something kind of going back to basics. We've been talking about organics so much for the last two years. So I have my bag of recyclables for my kitchen. I just was in Avalon last Tuesday night giving a presentation with my bag of recyclables, and so I plan on doing that as we have town hall meetings with the community, really educating the folks, some of the comments that, um, Vice President Schaefer had mentioned. It's it's going to take time. It's it's a switch when everyone's so used to putting everything into the black container and having someone else do it for them. But now the law states, you know, the the consumer, the resident, has to do it. So we'll have a lot of examples, show and tell. Um, you know, I think my frustration as time has evolved since recycling started in nineteen eighty-nine, that the numbers on the bottom, although are good, a lot of them referred to more as content made from recyclable material but aren't necessarily recyclable in today's market. And I just wish as recycling has evolved as a in the country, that we maybe say, here's what you can recycle with your own special logo, and here's a separate logo that says made from recyclable material, because that's where it continues to get confusing, because as stated, even on a, um, piece of Styrofoam, it will have the logo with a number in it, but that item is not recyclable. And so it gets very confusing to the consumer, and that's why I believe whenever the district does their birthday events or, you know, when the community can come out, we do town halls that we have visuals and a table saying, you know, on this side, here's what should go in your recycling container, and then here on the other side, even though it may have a symbol, is not recyclable and goes into the landfill cart. So it's it's just a constant education.
Why should government make it easy?
Yeah, um, Reagan did a joke about, you know, I'm from the government, I'm I'm here to serve. And nobody liked it. I think, I think, I think you or Dean or somebody said that Styrofoam is recyclable, it's just not practical. You know, you you have a whole truckload full of, it weighs twenty-eight pounds and.
Exactly, in large quantities, and, I mean, there are, so if you are, let's just say you're a manufacturer and you produce and have a lot of waste of Styrofoam, and you have compactors or roll-offs full, there is, there is a place that you can take that source separate material and recycle it either free or maybe there's a rebate for it, but it has to be kept separate and in large quantities. Same thing with the shrink wrap, but once it's put in the mixed cart, half the time when it goes across the sort line, a lot of that's going to fly and be all over the place and end up in the landfill anyway.
And and we still get the most favorable organics rate in this contract.
Correct.
And 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 the middle of the, I forget what it's called.
The average.
The the two most favorable rates we still maintain. The, the two most favorable rates we still maintain.
That's correct.
Director Echols?
Just, just, uh, follow up, um. We've had, I don't know, three, four of these reviews and, uh, we've had little minor adjustments, major adjustments. Are these going to be amendments to the existing contract or is this going to be an all-new contract written? Do we know that?
This is an all-new, this is an amendment to the contract, the way it was done.
Got it. And, uh, for my little brain, I like to see it all. Would it be possible before we get to the final agreed to draft to have what we've done so far on these amendments, so like a redline version of? Again, I, I can remember yesterday and before that sometimes, you never know. So just to see the fi, before we get to the final, just kind of a marked up amendment.
You want, we can give, so our plan is to give you the, the final next week. So what we give you is two documents. We give the document, the strike through with all the amendments we did since the last review. As we did, and then we'll, and the second document will be the clean version of that contract for you.
Director Echols, are you asking for an integrated version?
Yeah, and some sort of.
Cause that's, that would be a new agreement. That, that was what we were hoping to do, but we, you know, the way the time lined up, uh, we ran out of time to do that. That was, uh, that would be in a perfect world where it would be one document and everything would be integrated. And that, that's not where we ended up, but
Okay.
Uh, maybe, uh, organics was just too much of a challenge with what we had already.
Got it. Well, yeah, if we could, you, you got the idea. Um.
Yeah, we, we do need to lay that out though, to make sure everything integrates. And that's what we've tried to do with our reviews, but of course it's more difficult for you just looking at the amendments. So, yeah, we need to do something for you there.
All right. Thank you.
Julie, I, I had one last question. When does this contract go into effect? As soon as the board approves it?
The board approves it.
Okay.
And Mr. President, uh, I hope you all got my email yesterday. We do have a little, uh, housekeeping measure we have to take care of.
Yes.
That's a, we have to make an adjustment to our operations code to be able to do this agreement. Cause we put a restriction on ourselves. And, uh, before this agreement, uh, can go into effect, we have to repeal that ordinance. We can make the signing this agreement effective upon the effective repeal of that ordinance. And then we can put whatever date we want in it for when it starts, but we have to go. That needs to be on the agenda at the next, uh, at the next board meeting. So I just want everybody to be aware of that. That'll be item number one. Repeal of that provision in the ordinance is inconsistent.
Um, the, the, I guess my one last question is, I keep saying that. The, there, there are, there are three different rates in here for the three different carts. Um, is it still our proposal not to roll the third card out until sometime in the future?
That is correct. We will roll out the program before fall twenty twenty-four. So we were thinking August, September, twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, I guess my ultimate suggestion would be that we pilot one-fifth of the city. You know, to begin to understand, um, what, what the constituents think about this process and we begin to learn, you know, what we would, uh, do differently when we roll out the, the other four routes. Um, so, you know, that'll ultimately be my concern, interest. If the board concurs.
My only thought on that, I guess I looked to the staff is how do you, how do you bill those customers for that service? Because you're putting an additional truck, you're delivering equipment. We'd have to plan for that because we have to order those cars because they'll have the RFID codes in them. So we can do that, but I, because of the tax roll billing, I'm just not sure how those in that pilot, we could build for that service.
Yeah, I, well, we, we build individual, uh, constituents now. It would be just somehow Stafford had to figure out how to build one-fifth of those constituents. And so that's a detail that may, may or may not influence, you know, my, my suggestion. Once we get to the details.
Yeah, I, I kind of like where you're going, but now I'm hearing. Yeah, maybe, I don't know. It's, it's a good idea, just not sure how. But, uh, one question is President Uden just asked about the three cart. Or we're not locked into that date. It is like we're shooting for this and so as things change, things change or.
Corrects of the law, if the, it was the desire of the board to go early, you could go early. We just need enough time to order the trucks and the carts. Um, the law states that before January one, twenty twenty-five, you have to convert to the three cart system. So that is your deadline. And then again, as it will be listed, we don't like doing anything near the holidays. So, you know, scratch November, December, if we're going to roll this out, we need to do it August, September, October.
Got it.
Technically start delivering probably right after Labor Day. Takes about six weeks to get carts delivered, but then leading up to that, we need to start putting together our communication plan, which include town hall meetings, everything we were talking about. But again, that can be changed, but we need enough time to back into. And then again, outline that communications plan and everything else we've discussed.
I, I think that's a plan that the board should see, uh, you know. Um, in, you know, in the detail that I, you just stated, and maybe we've heard that before, but I didn't understand it, but.
It's critical that we don't start this anywhere near the holiday. I just emphasize what Julie said. I mean, uh, holidays are the busiest time of the year for boxes and paper. And I mean, we, this needs to be a.
We want people to get acclimated before that starts.
Needs to be a June or July rollout, if at all possible, just to get people ready.
Yeah, no, I, I just want to see, I just want to see the plan. Um, do any, you have any other questions? Jim, did, did you want to make input on our public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, President Uten and members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher. Uh, this comment is related to the public confusion about what government is trying to achieve with the new program. And I believe not all of your constituents are going to attend the town halls, probably not all of them are going to even read the newsletter that you put out. Uh, but many of them, when they put their trash in the containers, are probably going to look at the lids of the containers to get indication of what should go in them. And so I'm looking at the contract. This is the back of page four, an amendment to article five, saying that the hauler CRNR shall provide blue containers to the customers. I'm suggesting you might want to be more specific in the contract as to how those containers will be labeled. I'm saying this because the blue containers that were delivered in Newport Beach have both stickers on them that are easily changed on the lid. But lids also have embossed instructions on them as to what should be put in the containers. And those sometimes with what we're hearing at these meetings, they conflict with what the sticker says. And they can conflict with, with the website, say, for instance, the blue containers delivered in Newport Beach. The embossed printing on it that cannot be changed invites people to, in Newport Beach, to put in those blue containers textiles, plastic grocery bags and oddly shoes. And Mr. Ballier in his presentation said currently textiles and plastic grocery bags would be considered landfill material that should not go in those. So you may not want, and people cannot be faulted for doing what it says on the lid to do. Uh, this is very nonspecific here in the contract. It's not saying how the containers will be labeled, but it does mention a list of what should go in them. And I noticed it mentions paper products, yet we heard that coated paper products should not go in it. So if the lid says paper products, people are going to be confused. Should you put a milk carton in it or not? This also says that in this district, you are being asked to put wood and dry lumber in the blue container. And I would point out in Newport Beach, I think inadvertently or incorrectly, the green containers have embossed on them to put the lumber in the green container. And nobody has any idea where, where to put it. Cause that seems to be wrong. And I think if the lumber is painted, it maybe is not supposed to be put in anything. It's supposed to go to the landfill if it's coated, and I don't know. So. Uh, I would suggest perhaps you want these containers not to have any permanent labeling on it, but have changeable labeling. As conditions change, you can change the labels and avoid the confusion, extra confusion that those embossed labels have created in Newport Beach. So whether that belongs in the contract or not, I don't know. But the labeling can cause confusion and the contract is not specific about what you want. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Julie, did you want to comment?
Mr. Mosher for your comments. And exactly with that, we will not be using embossed lids. We have labels that also, um, have the items. The labels are printed in English and Spanish. We also added a big caution yellow to the left of the label that says no batteries, no hazardous waste. And so, and then they have pictures. So to exactly what Mr. Mr. Mosher stated, um, I'm not specifically familiar with the carts that were delivered in Newport, but we already know at least for the ones we're ordering for CMSD, they will just be labels only. And again, as the state changes laws and says, hey, we no longer want this type of material, as stated, we can adjust that.
Okay, thank you.
This is break down your cardboard. Yeah. That's the problem. Break down your cardboard. That's Mike. Thank you.
Common sense later.
Common sense later.
Okay. Okay. If there's no, no further questions on the draft agreement, I think Steph, um, had some input.
We're going to have this Monday for, for approval or disapproval?
Yeah, that's my, uh, original intention, but now the district council says that, well, I guess we could put something in the language says that the agreement is effective once the board appeals, there's ordinance, we could put some language in there like that.
So then we'll see it in January for final approval.
We'll go on to, uh, adopting the resolution, authorizing remote meetings. Do you have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Twenty twenty-two dash nine seventy-six.
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, go on to oral communications and directors' comments. Um, do any of the directors have input?
Just wanted to do, uh, once again, uh, thank staff. Uh, this is not easy. And I know these negotiations, even with the best of partners is always, there's always stuff going on. So thank you to, uh, everyone who's been working on these and, uh, look forward to a solid final agreement soon. And then, uh, wish everyone a wonderful Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and all that good stuff. But I guess we will meet before, so eh, you can never wish it too much. So, uh, thanks, everyone.
Okay, do any of the other directors have input? If not, uh, thank you very much. Consider this meeting adjourned. Appreciate Steph's work on, on, on this. I know it's, well, and CRNR's been so compliant. Um, meeting is adjourned.